Council President and Council Members, we are now live.
Thank you. Good morning. We're going to get started. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instruction for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News Inquirer Legal Intelligenceer prior to the meeting and can also be found on P H L Council dot com. And now note that the hour has come. Clerk will please call the roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance, please indicate that you are present or say a word or two to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen when you speak. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning. Thank you.
Morning.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Morning, Council Lady.
Councilman Dom.
Morning, Council President and colleagues.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Happy to be here today.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman Green.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, members of council. Welcome.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gem.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan.
Good morning, Council President and good morning to all of our colleagues.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Still screaming justice for Breonna Taylor.
Morning. Absolutely.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, viewing public.
Morning.
Councilman O.
Good morning, Council President and good morning, colleagues.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Neil. Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and good morning, P H L.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez.
Good morning. Good morning, my colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Happy to be here this morning.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
Good morning, everyone. We have established our quorum. And traditionally, we would have our invocation. We won't do that today, but we will, however, have a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city, its leaders, and the citizens during the current public health crisis. We'll now observe a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 24th, 2020, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 24th, 2020 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 24th, 2020. Stand approve. All those in favor, say indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks to Councilwoman. And our next order of business is communications. And Mr. Decker, would you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that you may have in your possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on September 30, 2020, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at a session on September 17, 2020, Bill Number 200364A and Bill Number 200368A. And I respectfully request and submit for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the First Councilmanic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16405 of the Philadelphia Code, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move to the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of by way of reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. Thank you very much in advance for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, would you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one resolution entitled a resolution recognizing October 7, 2020 as Energy Efficiency Day in the City of Philadelphia. Mr. President, the Councilwoman has made a request to expedite this resolution and place it on today's final passage calendar.
The Chair recognizes, we want to ask for a suspension of the temporary rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. May I request, respectfully request, the suspension of the rules today to vote on this resolution at today's session of council.
Second.
And sec- properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Those opposed, ayes have it. The temporary rules have been suspended to allow first reading this day. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Gem offers one resolution entitled a resolution recognizing and celebrating the reopening of the historic Philip Jason Memorial House on October 10, 2020, which honors the legacy of Philadelphian Philip Jason, a Korean-American pioneer for democracy, political and religious freedom, and Korean independence.
Thank you very much. It'll be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Heenan offers three resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Health and Human Services to hold hearings to evaluate the City of Philadelphia's plan for distributing, tracking, and otherwise managing the rollout of the COVID-19 vaccine.
That will be on this week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Property and Public Works and Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold joint hearings to evaluate the impact, effectiveness, experience, and outcomes of remote work during the COVID-19 pandemic on the City of Philadelphia's citizens and workforce, and calling on the City of Philadelphia to produce an action plan to guide future remote work of city employees.
This week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing October 2020 as Manufacturing Month and further honoring Oak Foundry for their innovation and dedication to the manufacturing industry in the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by creating an overlay district titled W Y N, Winfield Overlay District, to include certain areas of land within the area bounded by City Avenue, Bryn Mawr Avenue, Parkside Avenue, 53rd Street, Jefferson Street, Upland Way, and Drexel Road.
Mr. Decker, was that an ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. That will be referred to committee.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Lisa Forrest on the occasion of her promotion to Battalion Chief of the Philadelphia Fire Department and for becoming the first African-American woman to earn this prestigious position in the 149-year history of the Philadelphia Fire Department.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers two resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Committees on Gun Violence Prevention and Children and Youth to conduct joint hearings to examine the need for universal access to trauma counseling for Philadelphia's youth.
Today's calendar.
And a resolution condemning President Donald Trump for making a Supreme Court nomination during this presidential election and calling upon the Senate Majority Leader, Mitch McConnell, to defer consideration of the nomination until after the presidential inauguration in January.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers two resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings regarding the governance of the Free Library of Philadelphia.
Next week's, next week's calendar.
That's a hearing.
Was that a request in the hearing? I'm sorry. A little distracted. This week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to hold hearings regarding the consequences of potential additional cuts by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania General Assembly to mental health services, especially those offered in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers one resolution congratulating Daniel J. Hilfertie on his retirement as the President and C E O of Independence Health Group and honoring his contributions to Philadelphia during his career.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers three resolutions entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating the Newman Goretti Boys Basketball Team on their successful 2019-2020 season and overall 24-4 record in the Philadelphia Catholic League Boys Basketball Championships.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to establish an advisory task force on disadvantaged communities and further authorizing the task force to produce a report of findings and strategies for uplifting disadvantaged persons in Philadelphia through access to arts and culture.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution encouraging the First Judicial District to institute administrative rules that allow the court to seal evictions and corresponding civil matters between a landlord and a tenant in the interest of justice and without consent from the opposing party, as well as invest in alternative processes of resolving landlord-tenant disputes, further calling on the Pennsylvania State Legislature to amend the landlord-tenant law of 1951 to allow for the sealing of evictions.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Squilla offers one bill on behalf of Council President Clark and one resolution on his own behalf entitled an ordinance amending Section 5 of an ordinance, Bill Number 180692, approved October 31, 2018, entitled an ordinance legalizing an existing wood deck and ramp encroachment at 1338 through 1344 Rising Sun Avenue by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein.
For the committee.
And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the First Councilmanic District and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16405 of the Philadelphia Code.
For the committee. I'm sorry, next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers one resolution calling on Comcast Spectacor to reconsider its naming rights agreement with Wells Fargo based on its history of unethical banking practices.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O offers one resolution recognizing and celebrating the Second Annual Latin American Book Fair in Philadelphia for its work in highlighting local Latin American authors, literature, and culture.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, we have no reports from committee today. So we will proceed with the consideration of the public comment. We will actually now take a brief five to 10-minute recess to give our technology professionals some time to connect the speakers. So we have for today to the meeting, hopefully this will be a little more efficient than what we've been doing in the past. So we can tee people up and have them go on. Not to mention the fact that we want to make sure that they hear the guidelines associated with the public comment. So let's take a five to 10-minute recess.
Mr. President, would you mind if we called up the resolutions and bills that are on second reading and final passage first?
Um, I necessarily don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I got you. We'll call, we'll call up the next order of business. Considerate there being no bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar. Thank you, Councilwoman Parker.
No problem, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 200491, 200501, 200502, 200503, 200504, 200505, 200506, 200507, 200508, 200509, 200510, 200511, 200512, 200018, 2000094, 2000095, 200144, 200160, 200161, and 200260. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. And again, thank you for the catch. I'll go through this again. Before we proceed with the public comment, we'll take a brief five to 10-minute recess to give our technology professionals some time to connect the speakers we have for our meeting today. This will allow them to hear the guidelines that have been established for public comment. So we'll come back in about five to 10 minutes. Thank you.
Hello, is there?
Hi, Eric.
Council President, we are now live.
Thank you. We will proceed with our public comment process. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comment and it will go as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendar for the possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 5:00 PM the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or against the legislation, and you add to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. We will have three minutes to speak today. So, we ask that you state your name for the record and you move directly to your testimony. A timer will be started and we will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. And when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, we will remind you of this. Once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks shortly thereafter. You will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. So, Mr. Decker, I want to people to also understand, be aware that the public meeting is being recorded because the meeting is public. Participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask the Chief Clerk, please read the name of our first speaker.
Aaron Baumann, commenting on 200094. Aaron Baumann?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Good morning, good morning. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Aaron Baumann, and I am a volunteer with Fifth Square PAC. And I am here to urge council to vote against the exclusionary zoning overlay for Society Hill, Bill Number 200094. This proposal is antithetical to the city's housing goals, environmental goals, and racial justice goals. Society Hill is a neighborhood built on a history of urban renewal and displacement of working-class residents. Today, Society Hill is one of the richest and whitest neighborhoods in the city and already enjoys several special exemptions to citywide zoning rules. Though I don't doubt council's intentions aren't explicitly racist, creating a carve-out to limit housing development in a rich, white neighborhood will necessarily have racist outcomes. Composing arbitrary height limits and eliminating historic building bonuses won't stop luxury development and displacement, but will force development outward to more vulnerable, poorer, and more diverse neighborhoods south, north, and west of Center City. Society Hill is a core neighborhood of Center City, Philadelphia, as much as some residents might like to imagine otherwise. Tightening the exclusivity in Society Hill and refusing to absorb their fair share of housing is the wrong choice for our city. And with regard to council manic prerogatives, the choices we make in Society Hill and elsewhere in the fourth district have impacts for all of Philadelphia. Please, council members, I urge you to vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Benjamin Shi, commenting on 200094.
Hello?
Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, okay. Hello, my name is Benjamin Shi, and I'm a volunteer with Urbanist Advocacy Group Fifth Square. As an organization committed to an excellent development and fair housing throughout the city, we are staunchly opposed to Bill 200094 that would introduce an exclusionary zoning overlay for Society Hill. Imposing a forty-five-foot-high limit on the blocks closest to Old City and requiring parking minimums and youth restrictions for historically certified properties, the bill will stifle new housing in the transit and job risk section of Center City and place future adaptive reuse efforts for historic buildings in jeopardy. As we know, Society Hill was a neighborhood radically altered in the 1960s through city-led urban renewal. Hundreds of working-class and minority residents were displaced through wholesale demolition, directly leading to an upscale gentrification of the neighborhood, where warehouses easily sell for well over $1 million today. Multiple mid-rises on Walnut Street were expressly demolished in a wanton act of architectural purification, buildings that would be barred from being rebuilt with this overlay. As architectural historian Star Hall Cardillo puts it, "Society Hill, as we know today, is much more a product of 1960s urban renewal than 18th-century Philadelphia." Letting a handful residents define Society Hill's urban context while ignoring his history of wanton urban renewal that the demolished, non-conforming mid-rises is the epitome of hypocrisy and the opposite of good preservation policy. Secondly, it is wholly inadequate and unjust that city council would take up zoning code legislation developed through a single, private organization, the Society Hill Civic Organization, without so much as even consulting proper channels through the city. The SHC, the Society Hill Neighborhood Plan, was not developed in coordination with the City Planning Commission and thus never received the proper level of public engagement and feedback that a typical neighborhood plan would expect. Indeed, PSC Director Anne Saladon has expressed her opposition to overlay. The consequences of planning in Society Hill don't affect Society Hill. There are secondary effects and ramifications throughout the city. What no other neighborhood in Center City has disstricted the high limit for commercial students, Society Hill is tightening their exclusivity and refusing to absorb unrelenting demand for high-end housing. This will only send housing pressure outward to vulnerable neighborhoods in south, north, and west Philadelphia and accelerate displacement, housing pressure outward. Society Hill was and always will be a part of Center City and exactly where we should be providing abundant housing for all income levels for maximum opportunity and minimum risk of displacement. Fifth Square has signed a position, a shared position that's collected over two hundred and forty signatures in just three days. If this bill goes through, your actions could be a model for other affluent neighborhoods to follow throughout the city, and Philadelphia could very soon become a city facing a dire gentrification and displacement crisis on a level of San Francisco or New York. We strongly urge council to say their opposition to this bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Larry Specter, commenting on 200094 and 200095. Larry Specter? Larry Specter, you are the next speaker. Please unmute your phone, star six. The next speaker is Mary Purcell. Mary Purcell?
That all?
Mr. President, Mr. Specter and Ms. Purcell appear to be having connection issues. There are no other speakers after them, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, well, we have to proceed. Sorry that we weren't able to get them on, but they can always submit their written testimony to be included in the record. Did that concludes all our speakers, Mr. Decker?
It does, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That has concluded our public comment session. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar today. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of Resolution Number 200491?
A resolution calling on the Kenny Administration to develop a plan to be more inclusive of city council when creating and implementing emergency public safety measures and restrictions.
Who's? Who's the sponsor?
Introduced by Councilman O., Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Resolution Number 200491. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. And Resolution Number 200491 has been... Fooled. Mr. Decker, did you, um... This script is today.
I, yeah, an amendment is scripted there, Mr. President.
All right. I assume you have a challenge.
All right, I'm having connectivity problems. Did you hear my motion?
I heard the motion, and Resolution has been amended. Resolution Number 200491 has amended will place on our final passes calendar for the next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200501.
A resolution honoring and recognizing David T. Jones for his accomplishments and numerous contributions to the city of Philadelphia on the occasion of his departure from the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services, and congratulating him on his new position as Director of the Division of Substance Use Prevention and Recovery for the State of Illinois Department of Human Services.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200502.
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Benny Swans, founding president of Philadelphia's nationally acclaimed Crisis and Defension Network.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Benny Swans was a giant in the city of Philadelphia around the issue of gun bounds. If we had more Benny Swans in the streets of Philadelphia today, I'm sure we wouldn't see the level of gun bounds that we're seeing. Council President Collins, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200503.
A resolution declaring September fifteen, two thousand twenty, through October fifteen, two thousand twenty, as Hispanic Heritage Month throughout the city of Philadelphia, honoring the role that Latinos have played and continue to play in the economic, cultural, and social development of our city and nation.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200504.
A resolution honoring Richard M. Engler upon his retirement as Temple University's president and his contributions to Temple and Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Don for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. Resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200505.
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of United States Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg for her instrumental legal career, service to the United States of America, and her relentless work to challenge gender discrimination and ensure equal protections for all Americans.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for the adoption, I just want to mention from this resolution that Justice Ginsburg, one of the comments I made last week I think is relevant to make this week. I thought about it a lot. Valued friendship over politics. Valued friendship over politics, which is something this body has done under your leadership, which is pretty amazing. I just wish the federal government would look at this body and see how we have accomplished a lot of goals for the city. Because what we saw Tuesday night was not the wisdom of Justice Ginsburg. And with that, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200506.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the mathematics, civics, and sciences charter school boys' basketball team on their successful two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty season and overall twenty-four-to-five record in the Philadelphia Public League Boys Basketball Championships.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. Those in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 507.
A resolution authorizing the creation of the Philadelphia Arts and Culture Task Force.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the Resolution Number 200507 be withdrawn.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. That the Resolution Number 200507 be withdrawn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution Number 200507 has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200508.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the first council manic district.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200509.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying peace of full title to Center City on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the first council manic district.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200510.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Boys Latin of Philadelphia Charter School, Jexel University, and the Center for Black Educated Development for the launch of the Boys Latin Teaching Fellowship, a partnership that seeks to create a pipeline of male teachers of color in Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to make a motion for the resolution, but before that, I just wanted to say it's been a really rough week for those of us who have all been, and I know all of this body has been paying particular attention to the loss of life of young African-American men here in the city of Philadelphia. It's really been quite heartbreaking, and so this resolution is required now more than ever. So, I make a motion for the approval of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200511.
A resolution honoring and recognizing the life and legacy of Malik Aziz for his towering achievements as a civic leader, trailblazer, and champion for returning citizens in Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O. Councilman O? Councilman O?
Mr. Decker?
Good? Councilman O? He indicated he had some...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm having connectivity problems, so I missed the first part of it. What is that?
We just need you to offer a motion on Resolution 200511 on Malik Aziz.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, can you read the title of Resolution Number 200... 200512.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Hu Mag Distribution and founder Rob Schwartz on the occasion of its ten-year anniversary in music distribution.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. The resolution be adopted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, you please read the title of Bills Number 200018.
An ordinance amending Title 21 of the Philadelphia Code and Title miscellaneous by adding a new chapter, 213200, and title of business improvement districts and special services districts to establish uniform procedures for the filing of objections by affected property owners against the formation of business improvement districts and special services districts.
Thank you. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, will you please follow the roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kennedy Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The, Councilman O'Neil, did he ever, Councilman O'Neil, did you ever connect? Okay. Ayes are seventeen, nays are zero. Majority of all members haven't voted in for me to the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Number 20004.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code and Title of Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of Section 14500 of the Philadelphia Code and titled overlay zoning districts by modifying the CTR Center City Overlay District, Society Hill area, to create additional standards concerning height, parking, signs, and special reviews.
Thank you. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker?
Is that a point of information? I know there's been some back and forth regarding this bill. I just wanted to give Councilmember Squilla an opportunity to provide some information regarding the legislation.
Councilman Squilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Green. This bill has been a work in progress through a remapping and overlay for over two years, meeting with the Planning Commission, meeting with the Preservation, the Park Services. What the overlay does, and people talk about the height of the overlay being restrictive, there's two areas in the Society Hill District that we put a height limit on, and we modeled them sort of after Boston, Georgetown, Baltimore areas that have historic areas. Along Walnut Street between Second and Fourth Street, two blocks there, sixty-foot, sixty-five-foot height limit, and that's to protect the park and to protect the, um, and Berkatow Exchange Building that's there. And really, what the height limit does, there is just, it'll make it a variance for people who want to go above that height. We've had some projects that were looking to develop in that area, and a lot of those projects are multimillion-dollar condo projects where we felt that if they wanted to do that, they would have to set it back and do certain things to protect the historic nature of that area. And so, the concern that we're hearing about, you know, this being a pressure on other neighborhoods and also racist in a way that would make the neighborhood more white, it is not true. I mean, this was, we looked at this for a long period of time. We went along the historic boundaries of... Um, they, i- it's not true. I mean, this, this was, we looked at this for a long period of time. We went along the historic boundaries of, uh, um, Society Hill. We pushed back on them and compromised with them. They didn't get everything they wanted as far as this. It was a bigger area. We narrowed it down just to historic where it meets the park and the Mercantile Exchange Building. And then there was another area at Head House Square on two CMX two buildings that would go from fifty-five to forty-five feet. So, uh, the, the people who are, are challenging this make it seem like it's the whole Society Hill, uh, neighborhood that's being affected, and it's really only a small area. So, um, this, uh, we did this along with the remapping of, of Society Hill. And again, it was a two-year process, meeting with planning and community residents. Uh, and it, it was a compromise. It, it was hard to, to, to go through and manage, uh, the community needs, the historic needs, the affordability needs. And so we think we did the best we can, uh, to make this overlay possible. And, uh, it was a lot of hard work, and I want to thank the Planning Commission for all their work in, in drafting this legislation.
Council President?
Chair recognizes Councilman, Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Council President, I just want to also say that I support my colleague, Councilman Mark Squillers, um, Bill. I know that he has worked diligently, um, and passionately, and most importantly, inclusively, um, around this bill over the last two years. As a district council person, I know it's very hard to balance the needs when you have aggressive developers who are building and they just want car blocks, the opportunity to build as they see fit. And so I commend the council for stepping up to the plate, working first and foremost in partnership with the residents and NIGRAS who live in that community first and foremost. And so just want to acknowledge your hard work and your dedication, and I will be supporting and voting aye on your bill. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes. Very much. Uh, Mister Decker, please, please read the title of the bill again.
Bill number two zero zero nine four entitled an ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to revise certain provisions of Section fourteen five hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled overlay zoning districts by modifying the CTR Center City Overlay Society Hill area to create additional standards concerning height, parking, signs, and special reviews and immediate changes.
Thank you. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mister Decker, call the roll again.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman Green? Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mister Decker, two zero zero one four four.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain portions of land located within an area bounded by Oxford Street, Nineteenth Street, Poplar Street, and Twenty-seventh Street.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mister Decker, call the roll?
Councilwoman Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mister Decker, please read the title of bill number two zero zero one six O.
An ordinance amending Section fourteen two oh three of the Philadelphia Code entitled definitions by adding a definition for site clearing. Further amending Section fourteen seven oh four entitled open space and natural resources by making technical changes to regulations regarding development on steep slopes and amending Title four of Subcode A of the Philadelphia Building Code.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mister Decker, call the roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné San- Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mister Decker, please read the title of two zero zero one sixty-one.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Main Street, Bridge Avenue, Wissahaven Creek, the Schuylkill River, and Osborne Street Extended.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mister Decker, call the roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mister Decker, please read the title of two zero zero two six O.
An ordinance amending Title four, Subcode A of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter three permits and amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter fourteen three hundred titled administrative procedures by amending the terms and conditions of administrative review. Yeah, I've been looking at the same feed, Mister President.
Yeah, always getting distracted. Let's go ahead with this. Um, this bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mister Decker, call the roll on this bill.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnoné Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. So Mister Decker, we're getting, uh, a feed that indicates that two zero 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 nine four. Um, we lost the audio, uh, for the vote. Um, I do believe that that vote was seventeen zero. So let the record reflect that that vote was seventeen zero. So for the record, thank you.
I have additional resolutions, Mister President?
Yeah. Mister Decker, you have it. Please read those additional resolutions.
Uh, a resolution recognizing Wednesday, October seventh, two thousand twenty as Energy Efficiency Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gil- Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mister President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings to evaluate the city of Philadelphia's plan for distributing, tracking, and otherwise managing the rollout of the COVID-nineteen vaccine introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mister President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Property and Public Works and Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold joint hearings to evaluate the impact, the effectiveness, experience, and outcomes of remote work during the COVID-nineteen pandemic on the city of Philadelphia's citizens and workforce, and calling on the city of Philadelphia to produce an action plan to guide future remote work of city employees introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mister President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committees on Gun Violence Prevention and Children and Youth to conduct joint hearings to examine the need for universal access to trauma counseling for Philadelphia's youth introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, before I call for the adoption of the resolution, I just want to acknowledge my colleague, Councilwoman Helen Gimm. Uh, we have been discussing as it relates to this issue of gun violence and the impact it is having on children here in the city of Philadelphia. We know that hurt children hurt children. We know that hurt people hurt people. And so, um, initially, we looked at only focusing on the Philadelphia school district, but after talking to my colleague, Councilman Helen Gimm, as well as Councilwoman, um, Kendra Brooks, the focus should be on all children here in the city of Philadelphia, how we providing a level of resources to support not only the children, but also our community that, that are suffering as related to gun violence in the city of Philadelphia. And so I ask for, um, the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Mister President.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings regarding the governance of the Free Library of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman
I'm sorry. With, by whom?
Introduced by Councilman Green, Mister President.
Green. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to hold hearings regarding the consequences of potential additional cuts by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania General Assembly to mental health services, especially those offered in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I'm just wanting to remind my colleagues about eight years ago, uh, when the state, uh, was dealing with a very significant, um, economic issue due to the recession, uh, about eighty-four million dollars, um, was cut um, from the mental health, um, budget. And when you think about that time, the Commonwealth was dealing with a seven-hundred-million-dollar deficit. And I don't need to remind colleagues the challenging budget season that we had, um, this year where we went from a six-hundred-forty-nine-million-dollar deficit to a seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-million-dollar deficit. And when you think about the fact that the Commonwealth by June of next year may be having a five-billion-dollar deficit, uh, that raises some very significant concerns about what will happen at the state level. Uh, many of the people on this call know I've been advocating for, um, state and local, um, reimbursement at the federal level uh, to help us deal with the deficits that the Commonwealth and the city of Philadelphia received due to COVID. But when you have this major deficit that the Commonwealth has and the fact that we as a city receive hundreds of millions of dollars in grant funding from the Commonwealth to provide for behavioral health, and in this period of COVID, this creates a very big concern for a number of agencies. Um, I've been talking, uh, throughout the summer, um, and the spring with a number of organizations from the Alliance of Community Service Providers that are a lot of the umbrella organizations that provide behavioral health services as well as the Coalition of Culturally Competent Providers. And many of these organizations, uh, had some very significant challenges in the beginning of COVID and how to provide services remotely. Uh, we were able to work with our interim uh, Director of Community Behavioral Health, Donna Bailey, and we're able to provide those services in a distance way. But having a child on alternate spectrum and knowing the challenges and not being able to have a therapeutic support service person come into your household and not being able to be in the classroom, a lot of these concerns and issues are, will be very grave. And the fact that we as a city have already, um, been reduced in a lot of the resources that we have just trying to get through this budget, the fact that next year's budget will be e- equally challenging, and the fact that the Commonwealth has a potential five-billion-dollar deficit that's going to put some additional strains on their budget and can have very dire impact and effect on the city of Philadelphia, especially for those who are most vulnerable and have some type of learning or physical difference. Uh, so based on that information, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mister President.
Thank you very much, Mister Decker. We will now move to our speeches. And prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record, this time we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized in order to comply with the Sunshine Act. The chat feature must only be used for this purpose. Uh, with that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the major minority? And the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to, uh, recognize, uh, on behalf of really everybody on city council, um, the wonderful work of Malik Aziz. Uh, it is, uh, really unfortunate that we've lost a number of leaders who in the heyday of Philadelphia's gang war violence, uh, really went out there on their own and, and, uh, took control of the situation. Um, you know, with the, uh, the vision and, and the foresight and, and the courage. And, um, you know, it's a great loss to Philadelphia. We've lost Benny Swans, you know, from the, from the House of Imoza David Fatah, we're looking at, uh, right now Malik Aziz. These are people that, um, um, they have not been replaced, quite frankly. There are people out there doing the work. There are people out there doing the work, uh, OG Loss, uh, Samad, other people out there. But, uh, the impact that they've had and, and what they've done to really kind of reconfigure and readjust society in terms of how we deal with people who have, uh, found themselves in these very difficult and challenging situations, um, dealing with violence themselves and, and trying to react to a violent environment and what they do. And I'm looking at Councilman Curtis Jones, who was in the thick of it and is a model of someone who has come out of that and contributed to society. Um, and well, you know, we owe them a debt of gratitude and, uh, they're, they're very missed. And I just wanted to say on behalf of all of us, I'm sure, uh, to his family and to his friends and loved ones, thank you and, uh, God, God bless his soul.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. You're here. Uh, speeches on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning, everyone. I have spoken before this body regularly over the last several months about the urgent need to address gun violence in our city. For many people, this can feel like a distant issue. So I wanted to share a recent experience that I hope will shed some light on what our communities are struggling through on a daily basis. The other night, I went to a location in my district where a homicide had just taken place. A young man had been shot multiple times. His body laid under a sheet while police processed the scene. The young man's mother was stunned and inconsolable. A young woman lay on the ground immobilized by grief. Family members comforted both of them and one another. The young man's friends were there too, keeping to themselves and looking stern. Neighbors stood outside their homes shaking their heads in disbelief. And I asked one young woman how she was feeling. I'll never forget what she said to me then. It doesn't matter what I say, nothing will ever change here. I couldn't find the words to console her. There was nothing I could say in response that would matter. And in that moment, I realized how much was missing in the way our city showed up to support this community in the aftermath of this horrific event. There were police on the scene diligently completing their investigation. But as far as I could tell, there wasn't anyone sent there specifically to attend to the needs of the people left traumatized by this young man's untimely death. No one was there to treat these people like people. And so, it's no wonder the young woman I spoke to had so little hope. It felt like this death was becoming a statistic before my eyes. I am not sharing this story as a way of saying that I know all of the answers. I am not sharing this story as a way to dismiss the hard work of public servants who have devoted their careers to making a safer and more peaceful city for all of us. But based on what I witnessed, the needs of the community are not being met. And I honestly do feel that this is important to call out. A murder scene is not a transaction to be addressed with impersonal efficiency. It's a moment in which people, our neighbors, our citizens, are experiencing what literally may be the worst moment of their lives. It's a moment when people are worrying about their safety and the safety of their families and whether they could be next. It's a moment where hurt, angry young people may be planning retaliation and revenge. But it's also a moment in which we can show up and show our humanity as a city. When I say that we need urgency and that we should be prioritizing this crisis, that means showing up differently. I would have wanted to see experienced crisis workers addressing the trauma. I would have wanted to see mediators and violence intervention teams working to prevent a retaliatory incident. And I would have wanted us to act sooner. The loss of this young man is the latest in a spate of shootings in the area over a few months in the span of just a few blocks. Urgency would mean working with these young people, heading off these conflicts, and not just watching them happen and providing a barebones response when they do. I showed up at this scene in my district the other night because it's my firm belief that I have to know the worst of what my constituents are experiencing to fulfill the full duty of bringing a solution. And so, I hope my words in some small way can convey this sense of duty that I feel to protect my constituents and advocate for peace, justice, and attention to this grave issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Um, you know, you have a thought process of where you're going with a speech, um, to bring up issues and then, um, my erstwhile colleagues, um, change your perspective, uh, in the moment. And so, I want to thank, um, Councilman Gaultier for her, um, presentation, um, this morning, her speech this morning, and her call for a sense of urgency to address the gun violence in our city. And I also want to thank both, um, Councilmember O and Councilmember Johnson for, um, taking legislative action to recognize, um, heroes in our city that lived up to that sense of urgency. Um, when you think about the names of David Fatah, Malik Aziz, Benny Swans, those are individuals that saw the need for urgency at the time that they started to do the work that they did. And as this call for urgency, which will bring about, uh, the next generation, uh, David Fatahs and the Benny Swans and Malik Aziz to help us to get out of this gun violence issue that we're dealing with. Uh, we all recall, uh, some of us recall more than others, um, the issues, you know, in the seventies of no gang war in seventy-four and how things were impacting our neighborhoods from the crack epidemic and the amount of violence that we've had. And we've had a chance to bring that down, and it's not going back up. So I believe with this sense of urgency, uh, a, a level of despair, but also, um, a level of hope because we have come out of this issue in the past. And it's the urgency that Councilwoman Gaultier calls for. And I think this body will demand in our upcoming budget that allow us to create that next generation of leaders that Councilmember O and Johnson, uh, saluted in their resolutions, um, today. I also want to, um, remind my colleagues, um, that on Monday, um, October fifth at one o'clock, I'll be having hearings on, uh, public banking concept here in the city of Philadelphia. Uh, this is an issue that I started with in my first term. Um, many of you in this body know that, uh, I started as a banker. I'm already in Bank at Broad and Glenwood, right across from Joe Frazier's gym, uh, Garment Square section of North Philadelphia. I actually had some hair then, I know it's hard for some to believe. Um, but we've been looking at this issue for some time. We were able to identify resources, um, in the city budget, um, in the legislative initiative line item when the Finance Department, we engaged a consultant, HRNA, that's done these type of reports around the country for those other cities who have been looking at public banking. Been working with the Philadelphia Public Banking Working Group, uh, on this issue for some time. Um, this week, HRNA released, uh, their public banking study. Uh, we'll have a conversation with them on Monday at one o'clock and continue to delve into this concept of public banking and how we can replicate some of the benefits that we've seen in other parts of the country. Uh, for example, the Bank of North Dakota, um, and other cities are looking into this concept, especially in this time of economic, um, crisis. And I, I will close with a little bit more positive perspective. Uh, October is a, is a time of, of season, fall. It's festive with a lot of colors. It's also a time period when we have our annual Autism Walk. Uh, and I've been a long-term supporter of Autism Speaks. Um, that's an entity that, um, has helped provide resources, especially in reference to research for those families who have a child on the autism spectrum. Um, various years, my wife has chaired, um, the local Autism Speaks Walk. This year, due to COVID, uh, we can't do the walk like we normally would do at Citizens Bank Park, where we walk around the park and have a number of families come together celebrating, uh, their children that have achieved, um, in this issue of autism. So I will do a little bit of supporting the Autism Walk on this weekend. I'll put up my Light It Up Blue banner so I hope everyone can support the Autism Walk, um, this weekend. You can go to autism speaks dot org to support the virtual Autism Walk, uh, this Saturday. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I rise today, um, to first of all, thank my colleagues, all of you, uh, for your intense, laser-like focus on the issue of gun violence. Um, and to join the chorus of people who are taking exception, not allowing this to be the new normal or somehow acceptable in the city of Philadelphia that this level of, um, of, of fratricide, homicide, suicide happened in our community unchecked. So I want to thank, uh, a member Gaultier, uh, member Johnson, and you, Mr. President, and all of you for your continued effort to deal with this. I think maybe later on, you're going to have an announcement that, that may contribute to some of this. You're not allowed to say those things, but I'm going to, I'm just going to tease, uh, Philadelphia to say that you are contributing to the solution to some of this. But I was asked, and it led into a vigorous debate with, which my members may, may find interesting. There was a recent study in Philadelphia that said African-American men, men of color, were disengaged with the upcoming presidential election, that even some of them on social media were touting Trump, uh, saying silliness, like Trump gave us money, uh, through, uh, the CARES Act and, you know, so what, he's a racist. All of, uh, elected officials in the Democratic Party in particular are racist. I'm, I'm reading these kinds of comments. And that debate turned into a vigorous debate within my own circle. And I had to remember that we have to speak to each and every constituency, including black males. And it's not like we in this council or that the Biden-Harris team won't address blackmail issues. But sometimes you have to kind of underscore, highlight what in particular we're going to do for them. As they sit in that barber shop, one in every three African-American men is in jail, probation, or parole. So an issue like, uh, dealing with a ten-year, no contact with the law, exhumement policy might be something they would hear. Closing the school-to-prison pipeline and opening a school-to-paycheck pipeline might be something that would resonate in their ear. Looking at what we did yesterday, and I thank my members for joining, looking at, um, the one hundred known shooters that now is being, uh, translated into the last one thousand Philadelphia shooters to look at how in the world did they wind up in that crime scene? How did the gun wind up at that crime scene? And if it was their first, second, or third criminal act, why were they allowed to go that many times? So if you start to look at what black men want, it's what every American wants. An opportunity to be free, an opportunity to work and support their family, and an opportunity to be relevant in the thoughts of the presidential campaign. Um, so if we start sharpening our, our pencils and our messaging, hopefully, God willing, they will hear. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you so much, Councilman. That concludes our speeches today on behalf of the minority and the majority. And with that, I recognize Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October eighth, twenty twenty, at ten AM.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. If council stand adjourned until Thursday, October eighth, twenty twenty, ten AM. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Please be safe.
Thank you. Have a good day.